Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, as we do each Tuesday morning, seeking your help and guidance for all the residents of Cameron County. Lord, this morning, we want to pray for the needs of all our residents. Many of them have diabetes, Lord, so we need to have more wisdom for these folks as to what they're eating, lack of exercise, all the other items that pertain to diabetic control. We also have a very poor economy, so, Lord, we want to pray for good-paying jobs to come to Cameron County. We applaud Cameron County as a leader in good-paying jobs, and I would like to see all the businesses of Cameron County follow in their footsteps with a higher minimum wage than our ridiculous low national minimum wage. We pray for adequate clothing and food for the needy of this county. Lord, there's hundreds, if not thousands, of families that just need help, so, Lord, please help them in their everyday needs as we try to help one another. And I would pray, Lord, that the people that have an abundance would help those in need. We pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. How are you all doing today?
Good morning.
Good morning. I really appreciate the opportunity to address you once again, and thank you very much for all your efforts associated with East La Blanca Park. But we've got to end up coming back before you again with a bone of contention concerning this park situation. We still don't believe that what has happened is the correct thing to do, because we came here July 13th thinking that grassroots politics was exactly what was happening with 36,000 responses. Truthfully, I figured I'd be before you with our group of people on South East La Blanca, the Friends of East La Blanca, right at this stage of the game, giving you the demographic study that went along with the petition protest to each and every one of the individuals here on this august body of government. What I'm concerned about right now is, as it looks like what we had originally talked about was terminating the lease and going back for requests for proposals or anything of that manner, seems to be circumvented by the way the restated leases, because the original lease is still in force at the same time also. Now, this may not mean a lot to you at this point, but maybe you need to go online and read an article about this. Island Breeze seems to be the only people right at this point that have picked up an article concerning this, where East La Blanca group cries foul over revised lease. We may not have it all together, because we're not attorneys. We're also not educated in other things, like... But basically, we know when we've been had. That's what I'm trying to say here, in a very polite way. And when you say one thing and do another, it concerns me. That means that you're willing to end up saying that we end up having a bad 100-year lease in reality, and that it wasn't good terms for the county or the citizens of the county in July 13th and making a good decision, even though it wasn't a 5 to 0 decision in our favor. It was a 3 to 2 decision. Yet, at the same time, two weeks later, you're going and signing another one in executive sessions with the same group of developers that have a leader that's been convicted of kidnapping. I mean, come on now. Well, we've got better things to do than come before your court and bother you with five minutes at a time. You know, it took one year to get on the agenda. We got patted on the back, and you deserve to be patted on the back because of your original change of direction that you were going to. But here's the point. Don't look at me. Look at this. We're here to save. We're here to save that park so every working joke can use that park on South Padre Island instead of give away a billion-dollar piece of property. And here we go again, is what the headline says. We're going to have to come back and readdress this whole thing after over a year of dealing with it. And that's our point, is we shouldn't be in this position again. And the developers didn't even answer Mrs. Tomayo's questions of various points, of answering, "How many jobs and what level of economic benefit can these jobs have? Low income, middle, high, management?" And in any good business plan, every businessman in here will know that in any good business plan, you're going to know exactly what your social security taxes are and any other liabilities you've got for each and every pay scale you've got. Now, if the developers can't even answer that, they certainly can't tell you how many thousands of jobs that they're promising to give you through a casino situation, which is illegal still in the state of Texas, if I recall. And the four towers that they want to build, the 29-story hotels originally, there's no question in my mind that they fully intend to use this for timeshare, which are condominiums. You're giving away a park for multiple generations here. You're choking the golden goose and giving the golden goose away. And we need some help out of this. We need some kind of movement on your behalf. We don't want to play dirty politics on this. We've been trying to be respectful on this thing, but we've got no choice now. Now it's come down to the bone. The bone is, there's an election coming up, and we've got a very long memory. No matter how many elections it takes, we're going to end up trying to motivate people to do something about this. It may not be today, but then again, it could be. So just stand assured that we're going to be here, and that's the way it is. But here we go again. Thank you for your time.
Judge, may I address that? You know, I drew the contract for the county, and my marching orders from this board was to negotiate that contract so that it got the lease out of East La Blanca Park. And that happened. That's what we did. Now, I had communications yesterday from somebody that may be part of your group, but I talked to her, I mean, I emailed back and forth with her, and I think she now understands. And the problem she was raising was that the lease didn't get it out of East La Blanca Park because of Page 35, there's a right of revision. That right of revision has nothing to do with being in East La Blanca Park. All it is is the... And to meet your comment about circumventing the lease, you can't legally just circumvent a lease. You can get into litigation and try to get rid of the lease, and we were prepared to do that if we had to. Or you can renegotiate with the person that has the lease and accomplish your goals, which is the more sensible route to do, and that's what we did. The lease holder said, "Look, Richard, we have a lease to the entire park. Why don't we, being the group, just go ahead and develop it and let you all sue us?" Well, we discussed that and the alternative there. But what their real bone of contention was, if we agree to go out of East La Blanca Park and give that back to the county and take this 27 acres you're offering, what's to guarantee us that some future commission won't lease East La Blanca Park to somebody else? Okay? And there is no guarantee of that, because under the Constitution and the statutory structure in the state of Texas, a commissioners' court in any county has the absolute ability, in fact, the responsibility, to maximize the use of its property. You can't give that away by contract. Okay? So what we did do, they said, "Okay, we've got this 100-plus acres. We'll give it up, but we'll give it up only if you'll include a clause, this reversionary clause, that if any commissioners' court decides in the future that they want to lease this property for the purposes we have a lease, then it'll revert to us." And I think that's a reasonable thing to do. We did that. And it shows the intention of this court not to ever... This body here not to ever lease East La Blanca Park. Now, you can't just give it up, give up the right or the obligation the Constitution gives this body. So nobody's been had on this lease, on this renegotiated lease. They did exactly what the people... They listened, and I think you ought to applaud them for listening. They first entered the original lease with much publicity. There were a lot of hearings. None of you were here to say, "We object." Then, after the lease was entered, you objected. They still listened. And I know what they said, because they were my marching orders. Get us out of... Get this lease out of East La Blanca Park. And they did, exactly what you wanted to do. So I don't know what round two is all about, but it's wrong, because you're going round two against the people that listened to you and not anything else. So if I sound frustrated, it's because I was charged with drafting the lease, and I did it in a manner to do what my directions were. There is no longer any lease in East La Blanca Park. Now, there can never be an absolute contractual provision between this body and someone else to contract away a constitutional and statutory obligation, because while this all-county land belongs to all-county residents, not just you, but to all-county residents, they're charged, this court and future courts, are charged with the responsibility to maximize the benefit to the public at large. And contrary to what seems to be the belief here, this board has not only the responsibility, like I say, not only the authority, but the responsibility to do just that. They attempted to maximize the use of that property out there, but when there was a hue and cry from the citizens saying, "We want to keep East La Blanca Park," they listened, and now you're here condemning them for it.
May I make a rebuttal to that, a minute or two, please?
I think we've heard enough from you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Anybody else sign up for public comment? Number two, presentation of resolution recognizing Mr. Samuel William Jones for his contributions to the community. Is he here? Mr. Jones here? I met Mr. Jones a few weeks ago, and I didn't know that much about him until someone started talking to me about him and all the things that he has done over the years to help those people most in need. And I was amazed when I was told all the dedication that this man had given to humanity, the people that are just at the bottom of... The highest level of suffering that you can experience in this world. And he's a quiet man, didn't say much. He didn't tell me anything about this. And someone else pulled me aside and said, "This man is out there working day and night trying to help those people in Mexico that are the most in need." And when they told me his story and how he had made such a difference in the lives of so many people, I was just amazed and thankful that God put him in this world, because his efforts have made a difference in the lives of many people. But they've also brought attention to the suffering of these folks that he's attempting to help out and has helped out in the future. And I thought it was just appropriate for us to recognize it so that people can know this and people can learn from the efforts that he's engaged in, from the commitment that he's given to the community, and hopefully, if they do just a little bit of what he's done, can make a difference in our world today. Sometimes you hear about, you know, "It's all about me, and it's all about us," and then you find somebody who only cares about everybody else and not so much about him. So let me read this resolution. It'll tell you a little bit about what we're talking about, what I'm talking about. "Consideration and adoption of resolution recognizing Mr. Samuel William Jones for his contributions to the community. Whereas Mr. Samuel William Jones is a resident of Cameron County by choice, having moved here more than 50 years ago; and whereas Mr. Jones is a distinguished seaman and experienced fisherman, having been employed in the shrimping industry from 1953 to 1988 and having been the captain of his own boat, named the First Commandment; and whereas in 1983, Mr. Jones founded TexMex Ministries, an organization dedicated to conducting charity and religious activities in Mexico; and whereas, under Mr. Jones' leadership, TexMex Ministries has provided assistance to many people through prayer and the distribution of food and supplies with a particular focus on aiding widows." And by the way, what he does is he goes to the landfill in Mexico where people are living off of that landfill, and there's houses in the landfill, and he grows and helps the people that are in the landfill in Matamoros. Whereas, in addition to his extensive efforts as a missionary, Mr. Jones has also pursued religious devotion as a Christian poet, publishing a book of poems entitled "The Inspired Poetry of Brother Samuel Jones." Whereas during World War II, Mr. Jones served our country with honor and distinction as a member of the United States Navy; and whereas, apart from his many achievements as a fisherman and a servant of God, Mr. Jones is also known to as many friends as a family man who is devoted to his life for children and many, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And whereas the Cameron County Commissioners Court wishes to honor Mr. Samuel William Jones for his contributions to our community, now therefore be resolved that the Cameron County Commissioners Court hereby honors Mr. Samuel William Jones for his contributions to Cameron County. Approved this fifth day of September of 2005. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My wife and I humbly accept this recognition, and I proudly accept it for all of the members, the power warriors, and the donators and the go-getters that make up the TexMex Ministries. God bless you.
I was telling me the other day that they were traveling and went towards one of the landfills in Mexico to go take some supplies and some food to some of the people out there. And it was so bad that their cars got stuck in the landfill. They weren't able to get out of there. Somebody had to bring a tractor to pull them out. It's just horrendous conditions that exist over there. It's sad that that's happening, but thankful that Mr. Jones and the people that work with him and have contributed to his ministry and contributing to the efforts that he's engaged in over there are doing so and making a difference for those people.
What was the name of this organization? I didn't...
TexMex Ministries.
That's the way it reads. TexMex Ministries.
Thank you very much. Three, presentation of resolution proclaiming September 17th to September 23rd, 2006, as a national rehabilitation awareness celebration in Cameron County. I don't have a resolution here on that.
I'm sorry. This should be mixed up on that.
Huh?
This should be mixed up on that. I need to re-sign the resolution.
Okay. Is there anybody here on that resolution? On the resolution proclaiming September 17th to 23rd?
Do you want to come back to that?
We'll come back to that if we need to. Now, we'll table it. Presentation by Mark Hamlin from the Tex Association of Counties, president of the county for a recent Best Practice Award from the Tag Leadership Foundation. Come on up.
Judges, commissioners? I just want to take a little bit of an opportunity this morning to recognize... Did you just send them all out before my press conference? You know, it's going to be long and lengthy. I'm from Bryan College Station. Greetings from Austin. Tex Association of Counties' home base is in Austin. I'm an Aggie. Do we have any Aggies in the house?
Well, you know, there's a bunch of them.
Thank you, sir.
Do you know our juvenile probation director, Tommy Ramirez?
No.
He's from Bryan, originally from college from Bryan, yeah? He was on school board over there.
I took some courses at Texas State University.
You better be careful, though. You've got a Sooner behind you.
Yeah, and a Longhorn, two Longhorns right in front of you.
That's how he shot off that toe that he got on his right foot.
You gentlemen with the guns, I got my back. I want to introduce Mary Ann Sands. She's the Tex Association of Counties' field representative. Of course, you have several commissioners and elected officials. Even your officer has been very instrumental in the Tex Association of Counties. Mark Yates is here. Joe Rivera is a mentor of mine, a gentleman that a little over 11 years ago gave me some advice, and is actually where I got my start with the County District Plurcs Association. If you know Joe, I asked him about a problem that we were having within the association. He said, "Mark, quit writing about it and do something." And I did, and I ran for office, and Joe was instrumental in helping get a lot of people to vote for me, and Joe, I'll never forget you for that, in a positive way. And Aurora's not here, another good friend of mine, but I wanted to recognize her as well. On with the program. Tex Association of Counties annually recognizes anywhere from 1 to 20 if the most have ever recognized different types of programs that have been very successful. As you see the book that I have in front of you today, this book consists of all the applicants that were considered during the application. Out of all of these, Cameron County was recognized, at once, out of many, many applicants, for your devotion, for your dedication, and for your recognition of not only what Commissioner Tomayo... And I won't stop right there, because one thing that she told me when she was presenting this award in Austin, she said, "You know, I couldn't have done this without many, many peoples." The other thing that runs rampant through all the applications and the winners is they have committees. They have other people involved, it's not just one. And the thing that she said that stuck out the most was the fact, without the county judge and the commissioners' court support, there's no way that she could have ever accomplished what Cameron County has accomplished. Of course, we're talking about the family learning centers. This is unique, I think, to Texas. You have made Texas look good. You have made Cameron County look better, Commissioner. In rural areas, it concerns the education centers concern themselves with education. English, recognize that there was a need for the English as a second language. Health is an issue, higher education expectations. And bringing the community together, I read through the whole thing that was presented. It was amazing to me, the amount of leadership that it took and the vision that this body and the wisdom that you had to have to see that there is a need for underprivileged people. And for you to recognize that and to support that is unsurpassed. I will tell you that I went yesterday and saw your new courthouse. I didn't understand. This is a project that has gone on since 1994. It's a beautiful facility. I didn't realize that it was a new facility that had just been... The architecture had just been built to look like the old. But I even went inside. I don't know if I was authorized or not, Judge. I took a tour on my own. But it was a beautiful facility, and I thought to myself, looking at that facility, the thing is, even though this commissioners' court has continually looked at ways to improve the county and the ways that they... And you know, I heard all of the people, I've never seen them before, but I heard them up here commenting this morning. And that's such a healthy environment. I've been to so many county commissioners' court that folks, people, not you are not out there. People don't care, or they don't care, or they don't come to hear... So the people can hear your voice. So what I want to tell you is I'm very encouraged by what I've heard this morning, but I also want to make sure that this morning that I present the...
You may.
And I want to make sure, Judge, I want to see if you and Commissioner Tomayo will join me down here.
I'd like for, if I may, Salinas, who's taken over the family learning centers, and Pat Sanchez.
Bring them all down. Commissioner, would you invite, would you please introduce?
Yes, that's Salinas, our director for health and human services, and she's in charge of... Well, this is one of the hats that they wear. They've taken over the family learning centers, and of course, Pat Sanchez, who is your assistant. And our office stays involved, but they are... We're just supporters and facilitators whenever they need us. I do want to mention my staff, because before the family learning centers were turned over to the health department, my office was it. And so I have to mention my office partner, Lloyd Quintanilla, and my assistant, Clemente Cantu. They went the extra mile, never asked, "Why are we doing this?" They were energetic. They were on board. And of course, the communities. We couldn't have done it without the communities and the support of the court and the judge, who was extremely involved. He had this vision way back, but he just needed someone to come on board and kind of bring it to life, and we did.
On behalf of the Tex Association of Counties, I'd like to present the 2006 County Best Practice Exceptional Delivery of Service Award in convenience to Cameron County for the Cameron County Family Learning Centers for outstanding achievement in effective management of county government facilities, process, and programs issued by the Tex Association of Counties Leadership Foundation 17th day of August, 2006. Congratulations. I think we can recognize that what this is about is a vision that Edna had, about the importance of county government getting involved in every aspect of people's lives, whether it's a gap, whether it's a need. We have an obligation to work to use the resources that we have to make our community better. And I think we all understand that a lot of our kids need some guidance and need a place to go. This is not... I think when we had our prayer breakfast for the Day of the Child in April, Pastor Barry Jackson got up and he said, "This is not the same world that we grew up in when the worst offense a kid could commit was chewing gum in the classroom." Our kids are exposed to all sorts of negative factors every day, every day, every day. And our parents are determined that they can in order to help them out, but sometimes they need a little bit of help. And I think what the vision that Edna had with the family learning centers is to provide that little bit of help after school when the kids would get out, where they would be able to get touring services or just a place to go where there's a healthy environment out there with children to learn, to see each other, to get a snack. And they have been so successful. I was out in LaFaria two Sundays ago, and I had about three or four people come up to me and say, "Judge, can you expand the LaFaria Family Learning Center? Because we can't get in. There's a waiting list. There's a waiting list at that facility and the community. This is good for our kids." This is something that counties have not traditionally gotten involved in, but Cameron County gets involved in things that counties don't traditionally get involved in, especially when you have the leadership of our commissioner working on it. And we hope that people understand that with respect to our amendment to family learning centers, this is just to begin. Brother Clark has got something like that up at the Brightwood Park that we want to get more involved with and see if we can bring it into the county structure eventually and expand that whole concept all across county, not just in precinct three. You can't log it, break precinct four, you can't log it.
I'll be glad to help precinct four.
But it's something that is, we really think makes a difference, and I think, you know, I really believe that it's one of these things where you pay now, or you pay later. And this is one where we are making investment on our kids now, and I think the returns are going to be great.
The one comment I want to make, Judge, is that the school districts are doing a tremendous job with after-school programs. This isn't because they're not doing it. I'm talking about very rural areas where the kids can't get to the programs, to no fault of their own. Their parents, the car doesn't start, or the dad works late and can't get them there. We're talking about rural areas. The school districts are trying so hard and have wonderful after-school programs, but like the judge said, this is a gap that's there, and it's our responsibility to recognize that and the mentoring that comes with it. And the other thing I want to add, and I think perhaps you mentioned it, but I want to emphasize it because I can't, we can't function without them, and that's the advisory committees in each community. And I think the Valvoline Star had a slice of life of a lady, Mrs. Quintanilla, that's very active and astute. And she's, she had a quote there that I think is so true, and that was one of our goals in forming the family learning centers. She said, "We had nothing here before. Now they're community. Everything happens at the center. They have their Christmas potluck suppers there. They get together there. The community is not isolated anymore. They're united." And that's what's making it work. The school districts, private citizens giving donations, it's just the cooperation has been wonderful. And this ladies, I can't say enough, they took on the family learning centers, didn't ask for one more penny. Manuel Villarreal, where are you?
I am.
They didn't ask for one more penny, they just took that extra load of work that they had to do and went forward, and they're doing a tremendous job, and I can't say enough for them.
In a couple of years, we're going to bring to you our face-based mentoring program, and we're going to see if we can get an award on that.
And the gardening program, we've started, master gardeners have started butterfly gardens at the centers, and so, and that's where the mentoring comes in. It takes, I say it takes an army to raise a child, and you know the saying, it takes a village to raise a child. So that's what it's all about, all of us working together.
Well, Judge, I'll tell you, the one thing my grandmother told me a long time ago, she said, "Don't tell God how big your problems are. Tell your problems how big God is." And what y'all have done here today, and again, I want to applaud these people that have come and shared their, just showed a touch of class, and I'll go whenever one stood up and clapped for the program, and they did the same thing. They stood up and applauded and showed their respect, and I just applaud all of you for, again, for giving your voices this morning. But Commissioner Tamayo, congratulations, Judge, Commissioner's Court, for your vision and your wisdom. You have been selected this year. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Judge, I would like to ask you, you could jump to item three-four, the consent item. Mr. Bob Barcas, another former. Three-four, consideration authorization to execute a contractual agreement with Brown Hill Team and Senior Center Incorporated to provide services to Brown Hill Service Building and General. Motion to approve that. Motion by Commissioner Benavidez. There's a second to that, Judge?
Second to that, Judge. Just one question. The funding is coming from the park system, right?
Yes.
For that? And there's money there?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All of the papers signified by state and I.
Aye.
That was easy. Okay, budget amendments, line item transfers, annual salary schedules. Any questions, concerns, comments, complaints? Another motion?
Nothing to add to it.
Second. Second, my commission, if there's any further discussion, all of the papers signified by state and I.
Aye.
Minutes, August 22nd, 29th, and September 1st. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm ready for it. Ready to? Okay, motion to approve?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that the minutes reflect, I submitted an affidavit on warrant number 00165899, and I just want to make sure the minutes reflect it in session. All right. All those in favor, signified by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Claims. Any additions to the claims?
The Commissioner's Court, there's a list of additional claims. I can elaborate them. On the backside of them is a report of where we are with regards to the housing of inmates, either state and federal inmates. So I can read the additional claims, or we can just accept the list provided.
Move to approve the list with the list provided.
Thank you.
Motion and second. And still, we've got fifteen more federal inmates when the LaFia incident occurred, the LaFia escape.
We're at 282, as of yesterday.
Well, I don't know what happened with the other one, but we had brought in fifteen when they had the escape out there. And just for your information, we didn't have room for the fifteen in the hearing offices. We didn't clear out fifteen slots, so I think that says a lot for that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Consideration possible action regarding the job description for the Cameron County Attorney and Health Services Administrator from the organization in charge of authorization to apply.
Judge and commissioners, this is in keeping with the direction the court has given to move the infirmary supervision under the direction of the sheriff, at the same time, expand the role of the infirmary services director to have more administrative experience in correctional facilities. We're asking that you would approve the job descriptions, that it can be advertised, if there's any additions or deletions.
I just want to make sure, I have a note in the back on the item number eight on the health service, sorry, the health services administrator. Y'all have taken a look at that, and y'all are good with that, right?
Yes, sir. I've talked to the sheriff.
And that's going to be transferred over to y'all?
Yeah, we recommend that that transfer occur on October 1st of the new budget year.
And y'all are good with that?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Benavidez, second. My Commissioner Tamayo, first question?
One question. On the flow chart that was, or organizational chart that was put together, does that come from the recommendation from the lady that did?
Yes, Ms. Lauren Collins, yeah. This is based on her recommendation.
So everybody?
This is her recommendation.
This is a good thing. I'm glad we're doing this. We really need to get a hammer on the infirmary. I think this is probably the best way.
So in regard to that organizational chart, health services administration is who?
That's the new position. That's the administrator we're advertising for today.
Okay, not facility administrator?
No, the facility administrator would be the chief jailer.
Does any war on this organizational chart, our health department, have any, anything to do with what occurs at the county jail?
Not that I'm aware of.
So their services that they provide already, they will not be providing those services anymore?
It would depend on which, what manner of services you're describing. If you're talking about administrative services, no, I don't think that they have
Any type of services?
Any role over it. But maybe there are some programs that they have, that they provide, they are either doing inoculations or TB testing or things of that nature that they may have some role in. I don't want to say they don't have any.
So...
But as far as the organization...
But the organizational chart, my concern is, is my concern is the organizational chart as presented and recommended leaves the health department completely out of that operation.
Of the, of the organization and administration?
Right.
Right.
Okay. Well, of the, of the delivery of any type of service?
Well, I...
Because we have medical directors, we have psychiatrists, psychologists, you know, we're having different people provide services there.
Yep.
And I know that we have an outbreak, or we have an individual that is found to have tuberculosis as an example. The first people that are called is our health department to go in there.
Right.
To do some work.
Yeah, as their role as the people who respond to TB treatments. They do that as a function of their state responsibilities and county responsibilities, not solely as a role as administrators of the infirmary system.
So the health department will have no employees working there full-time at any time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not full-time, but they will be coming in as...
They may, they may have activities in providing services in the facility, but as far as the administrative aspect of it, the health department wouldn't have, wouldn't have the same role they have today.
But it'll be the facility administrator's responsibility and the medical director to coordinate those activities, for them to get involved.
Yeah.
Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, they would be. I would, I would believe that's how it would work.
Okay. I would hope that whoever is hired as the clinic administrator would have some input into the final organizational chart that we approve.
Well, I think that once the administrators are in place, they may have recommendations to changes that the sheriff would like to bring to the court as to how that's set up.
So there could be amendments to it?
There could be amendments to it, yeah. We'd need to have the individual there to, you know, determine what they recommend.
Okay.
All those in favor, signified by state and I.
Aye.
Claims. Also note my abstentions on warrant numbers 00167611 and 001675227. Nine, consideration authorization to utilize Johnson Patrol to the Texas multiple awards scheduled, Texas Fire Control.
Very complex. More justice, more commission. I just come to get your permission, authorization to utilize Johnson Patrol to replace existing fire alarms, suppression system. Here it is, complex. The contracts are being reviewed to legal.
Are we on my list?
Delby, I think, is reviewed, but she's here.
And the money?
If I look for the money, I'll give you some.
If you recall, when originally this was presented by Mr. Ullara, Johnson Patrol has provided a financing plan to where the payments are actually equal to what we're paying presently for the system that's in place that's going to be replaced.
And once we pay off, there's actually a safe?
Correct. Yes, there is a safe.
Move approved. The request is...
Did we, let me clarify something. Delby is the one that reviewed them, but I don't see it checked off.
I can bring her in here if you want to talk to her, but I don't, I did not read it.
I would approve pending.
Subject to legal?
Subject to legal.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. You're here on this one too, Maxi?
Yes.
Consideration authorization...
Oh, well, I'm on the table. It's next item.
Second.
How do you pronounce the elevator company?
Tyson Corp.
Tyson Corp.
Commissioner, on the one from the first office, it is checked out.
Consideration and authorization to utilize Tyson Corp elevator to fix the elevator, traditional building, and out of service its maintenance, without the six. Motion to table.
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Tamayo, for the discussion. All those in favor, signified by state and I.
Aye.
Carries. Eleven, consideration and authorization to increase sheriff and constable fee by order pursuant to the old government code section 118.131. What's this, Remy?
It's a rate.
Are you on eleven?
It's a rate.
Yes.
This is Richard Burst initiated.
The Judge, Commissioner Wood came to me with a pamphlet from the State Controller General's office, and it showed that Cameron County was way below average on sheriff and constable fees, and he asked why. So I got with the sheriff's office, the, their process serving department, and revisited the fees and submitted it. It's, we have to do, if we, the, this court can visit sheriff and constable fees once a year, and it has to be before October 1st, and the amended schedule has to be submitted to the, to the State Controller General by October 15th, be effective January 1st. The fees you see are comparable with Hidalgo County and other counties. I have, I provided a comparison sheet. Those figures are from the State Controller General's fee schedules for other counties.
How much of an increase was it?
Well, for citations, and there's, you'll note in the, in the, in the comparison sheet, some counties have many, many more fees than we have, and that's just because of the way they group them. For instance, we have one citation fee. It's increased from $45 to $60. The, and this is consistent with the averages across the board. Some are higher, some are a little lower, but they're all, you know, the lowest I see is 55 currently. Other county, Cameron County's 45 currently. Bayer County is 55, then it goes up to Nuasis County's 70, and the other counties are either 65 or 60. So we're clearly below the state average on that. As far as the...
How much do these fees generate per year?
I can't answer that.
I was looking for, have you had? How many do we deserve in each county?
I couldn't tell you right now because it, they all get lumped into one line item, so I'd have to go and break it out. I'd have to get with the other office and the district parks office.
I'd like to know what this means financially, because that's a significant increase.
Yeah, but it brings us in line with the rest of the state.
Yeah, I understand that. I don't have a problem with doing that.
Well, it brings us in line with some and not in line with others, because some others are less than...
Go on.
I mean, you took Hidalgo County, but there's other counties there that, that charge less than that.
There's only one. In fact, one's 80. One's 80, one's 70, Webb's 80.
Bayer County?
Bayer County's the only one that's lower. It's five dollars lower, and you can adjust it if you want to go to, I mean, whatever the court wants to do, but 55 is the lowest. That's Bayer County. El Paso is...
What is your recommendation to get it to us?
My recommendation is, I mean, it's basically Mr. Wood's recommendation, that is, to increase the fees accordingly and bring us in line. Now, there is one substantial increase, and that's with order of sale. We're at $75. The, we're increasing that to 200, and it goes from 165 to 200 on the...
From 100.
On the other counties. Was it, I don't see, is there a 100?
There's an 80 also.
On, no, not on the order of sale.
Yeah.
190?
Terrance County.
160? Oh, okay, yeah, you're right.
$80?
Yeah, there's some low, so I, you got, I mean, and you can, you can pick and choose if you want to reduce that one to a lesser increase, but I think we're, it's, we're one of the, we're lagging behind other counties in our fees.
So that, but you, there's a, there's a recommended schedule, right?
Yes.
Okay. Don't have a motion to approve the recommended schedule?
Make the motion, Judge.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Aye.
I suppose. Motion carries.
I would like to see what kind of impact these fees have on our budget. And where it goes.
Well, the money goes...
Goes into the general fund?
Goes into the general fund, so...
So the general fund will be in good shape?
It is in good shape.
Well, it depends on how many activities occur.
Consideration approval of order, do we vote on that? Yes? Yes.
Yes.
Consideration approval of order designated day of the week in which the county commission, and the commission's courts shall convene in a regular term each month for fiscal year 2007. Okay, motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Benavidez, second by Commissioner Tamayo. You're looking at me?
No.
I'm just waiting.
All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Aye.
I suppose. Motion carries. Thirteen, consideration and action on the coastal impact assistance program, an ad hoc committee for the county share of CIAP funds. That's, what is the recommendation? Now, tell us how you got to this recommendation.
Judge, commissioners, the committee met yesterday, and they reviewed the applications, and what they've done is...
Didn't we table the appointment of that committee last week?
We did, but, but we had to have a committee. Right.
We basically got the committee that we thought y'all wanted. To convene it. That's why he called it an ad hoc committee, not a formal committee.
Because we needed to make a decision today so we can get them up to the state by the end of the month. So basically what they've done is they, the project, the cost of the project is on the second to the last column, and then whatever we've allocated is, of course, on the last and then whatever we've allocated is, of course, on the last column. And they reviewed the proposals, and what they've done is, I don't want to speak for them, but I was there, I overheard them, and what they did was they rated them based on whether the projects had a, they were feasible. They would be able to construct them or start them within a year or two when the funding becomes available. And so what they've done is they've prioritized all of them, the ones that we're going to submit in tier one, and then the last two, of course, we're going to submit in tier two in case one of the projects falls out and that they can't get funded or for whatever reason. Because a lot of these are just shares. I'll give you an example, like the one for Bahia Grande. The total project is 2.7. They've gotten approval from the state for, to submit their project through the state funding. And what we're doing is they've asked us for a commitment of $500,000 from the county share to submit with their application.
That's like a matching.
Correct.
What is this, UTB, TSC, Port Isabel, birding, Palapas? I've never heard of that. Yes, okay, we have somebody here.
There's...
Get that off the head of me.
There's...
Wants to talk about it, huh?
There's other members here that have submitted applications, our sponsors, if you want to let them speak.
Well, unless somebody has a problem with any of them, I don't, I think up to now, the only one right now that I don't understand is this Palapa, birding Palapa.
Your Honor, Commissioners, my name is Floyd Akers. I'm the attorney for UTB TSC, and they've asked me to come down and speak to you. First and foremost, we want to say that we do strongly support Port Isabel's application for funds and that we've been working with them. And the Palapa is actually in cooperation with the city of Port Isabel and some private property owners. And essentially, what this would be, this would be a pier extending out from a private property owner's property called Pelican Station there, right by the causeway. It would go out a couple hundred yards. There'd be a Palapa at the end. It would be a birding observation center where the university could then send out professors to give lectures to the community on birding and pelicans and that sort of thing. So basically, what it would be is a bay observation post.
I mean, it's extending from a private restaurant?
Well, what it is, Your Honor, is that the private property owner, Mr. Zimmerman, would be granting us public access easements across his property so the public could have access to the area. It would join a city project, which is to extend a boardwalk around the area, and you would also be able to access this pier through a city boardwalk. And then the city would also, in cooperation with the city, hopefully, what we will do is get the rights to the property eventually in fee simple, and then the university would own the property.
But I'm a little, I think we're all a little bit troubled about this being an extension of a private restaurant. I mean, that's a great restaurant, and I don't have anything to do with the restaurant.
What we have there is, this is a fine boardwalk project with Tex- dot. The city owns all submerged property around the bay and the property in front of this private restaurant. What we'll do is, we'll, the city will lease the submerged property to UTB to build their dock and their Palapa for bird watching. So the property is not private. The property belongs to the city.
But how do you access it? That's the only thing I got.
The access will be granted by the property owner, which will give UTB a right of way on their property. That works. They will give a right of way to UTB to be able to access into the bridge.
Will that not also be accessible through the proposed boardwalk that you and Tex- dot, the city and Tex- dot is working?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. That's the other project.
That's the other...
But where is that boardwalk going to go in relation to...
It's going to go around the causeway. It's going to go about three quarters of a mile east into the causeway, around the causeway, back into, back into Garcia Street on both sides of the causeway. And then it's going to Capello Garcia Street to the south to connect to a proposed park that we're doing, the railroad park. And across the street, we're going to do, and then across the street will be the access between AEP property and this private developer. We're willing to grant UTB an easement, a restricted easement, for them to be able to access into the submerged property.
Joe, is that what the city commission wants as well?
Yes, well, they haven't brought it to the city commission. I know that they met, UTB has met with Robert, and they also met with a couple of members of the commission in regards to this project. And they, you know, they're willing to work with UTB if it's going to bring, you know, for educational purposes. And not only that, it's gonna, it'll be an added attraction to the area. To, of course, go, you know, like Mr. Garcia said, the city applied for some funding to build a boardwalk that is going to extend from one side of Parish Landing underneath the bridge around Pelican Station. So this will complement that boardwalk.
Okay. Y'all need to bring us, somebody needs to talk to us about this. I mean, I've never seen this proposal before. This is the first time.
I know UTB has to talk to AP, I believe.
Yeah, I would like to, I mean, I'm familiar with all these projects. Well, I haven't, I don't know anything about the state waters restoration project, and I want to hear from you on that. But I know about the first four because we got presentations on them. But this is the first time that I've heard about this.
They just brought it, I guess, to the table a few weeks ago, and when they found out that there was money available through the CIAP grant, they wanted to look into a plan for this.
Because it's a lot of money that we're allocating here, $165,000. And just, I was, is this what you want? The Port Isabel wants?
Yes, the Port Isabel wants this here, and it hasn't gone before the city commission, but it will be going before the city commission. And I don't see any problems with city commission approving us to be leasing any submerged property to UTB or giving us a gift.
But I don't think that's the problem that I have. UTB is fine, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of them building it. The only trouble that I have is that, at least for right now, the only access to it is going to be through a private restaurant. And that's rubbing on me a little bit.
And it's not to a restaurant, Judge. It's the property, there's an empty space between AP building and Pelican Station.
So it's going to be there?
Yeah.
It's just a banded alleyway that lets, that's to the water.
It's about 30 feet, about 30 feet wide. And what UTB has to do, UTB has to get an easement released from Pelican Station and AEP to UTB before that access can be done.
In essence, what you're saying is that there's going to be access to this birding area, not through the middle of the restaurant, but on the side. But you do have parking spaces right there in the restaurant.
Yes, I mean...
Basically, all they're going to share.
The city will have parking place on the proposed park, and also the property owners, the restaurant, will also has agreed that they can use part of their parking tube for visitors to use that.
I don't have any problem with that.
But they will have to get their, an easement from the property owners and convey the easement to UTB.
And that hasn't happened?
We do have letters of commitment from the Zimmermans to give us that easement. As you know, Mrs. Zimmerman is also on the board trustees for the college district, and they have already sent a letter to the city of Port Isabel saying they will grant it.
Is that the same Zimmerman that owns it? She does?
Yes, it's the same people that own it.
Judge, before, one of the things to consider is that we're not exactly sure how much funds are going to be available from the CIAP funds. And the range that was given to us was roughly $986,000 to 1.296. And so in the rankings, the way they fell was so that we could accommodate those possible fluctuations in cost. And the committee, in discussing the 11 projects that were submitted, I served on the committee with Mari Galván and David Garcia from the Department of Transportation. The, really, it was, we started getting to the lower, the higher, I guess, less priority projects. And it was sort of a, well, do they look like they're ready to spend the money so that we don't jeopardize future money? And this project looked like it was, it could go sooner than some of the other projects that had been submitted. And the one project that we all liked but were concerned about was the one that's on tier two with the city of Harlingen, the pedestrian bridge. Knowing that that area floods easily, we were afraid that the way the map looked, that the bridge, the $200,000 bridge they had there could easily be flooded out and damaged and carried away, and we might lose it. And so we, that's why that one came in under this one. And then the aquarium, the bay aquarium that the Birding Center submitted from South Porter Island Economic Development Council was that their project is a great project. Everybody saw merit in it. It was just that it didn't look like their $3 million project was being built. And so why commit funds that somebody else could use in this round if it didn't look like, if it wasn't going to be ready to be utilized? And that was with both of theirs, that, you know, they're great projects that were submitted, but it was just sort of like maximizing the amount that we might have available, the 1.296 or 98. So we included the project in the tier one.
And the timing of the rain didn't help that Harlingen project. As I said, you drove through there in the last week. It's all underwater.
And I mean, well, I mean, the area is designed to be a floodway.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean...
The only, Javier, I have one, and I don't have a question of you, Robert. I'm fine with you gentlemen.
Thank you, Robert. I just have one more, if, of course, we'll allow me just a couple of minutes.
Sure.
Okay. On behalf of the mayor, Pat Machan, and the city commissioner, I'd like to thank this commission, the judge and commissioners for committing $200,000 to the Dairy Park. The Dairy Park will be a wonderful place for us. It will have a bird wrap. It will have some piers going out to the water for bird watching. It will also have some facilities for barbecuing and be used for picnic. And it's going to be built in three stages. The first stage is to build a seawall, a training wall, to be able to keep our property, because it's getting eroded every year. That's going to be the first phase. The first, the second phase will be the bird wrap, and the final phase will be the entire park. I don't know if you have, if they're giving you a, I don't know what the park is going to look like, but for your information, this is what we're looking at. And it's going to be one of its kind. I mean, we don't have a walk park in the valley, and it will be used by the entire Rio Grande Valley people, you know, our visitors. And again, I would like to thank this commission's court for committing $200,000 towards this project.
I think it's a great project, Robert. I remember during the causeway collapse, when we were driving around, we're riding around in Texas Park, and while I both remember, we're looking for missing persons.
Missing persons, yes.
And we went by the Deer Park area because we had heard that there was something there. And I remember driving by there, and I remember thinking, you know, why have we not developed that area? And I thought that it was public, it was a private property, and that whoever owned it hadn't developed it. But it was kind of trashed out, and there was a lot of junk in there and stuff.
And we've been cleaning it up since.
And it seems like a great place for a park there.
Oh, it'd be great. I mean, it'd be great for our visitors from the valley to be able to use it.
Excellent.
So thank you very much for your commitment.
So you're not thanking us for the, for the birding Palapas zone?
And I'm also thanking you for that, Judge. That's going to be a great attraction to our project, to our parcel project, and to our railroad park. And that's going to be great. Working with UTB and working with the county, I think we can make things happen.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Bob? And you have a, have you, a cleanup day coming up? No?
We already had it last weekend, last weekend.
We're going to have another one, right?
No, we had the Otter Beach cleanup last weekend, on the first weekend in October, I believe it is.
October, no? Yes. October.
We're having the coastal bay wash. We invite the public.
We're going to have a thing with hot dogs.
I just figured.
And we're letting cokes and water for y'all.
Thank you.
As well.
Thank you. Which includes this area that they worked on. Excellent. Bob?
Good morning. Judge, the state water restoration project is essentially the navigation district property for the ground ship channel up into the Turning of Basin, down to, up the GIWW, which is going up into the waterway and up to Port Isabel side channel. The project was proposed as a $100,000 project with $30,000 of local match of district money to be done in two years, total of two years. And that was because of our local match money not being available except $15,000 a year. The situation is that we have thousands and thousands and thousands of vessels, commercial, recreational, and of all types, shrimping vessels as well. And there is a great deal of debris, let's face it, garbage, broken piling, building materials. And I wasn't able to get pictures of it because we had had torrential rains. And most of this work is going to have to be done through the water side because it doesn't have access in the land, and it's very expensive because of that. We haven't had the funds to do this cleanup. We also have had literally 60 years of broken piling, broken ballards, old docks, old, from back when we had refineries. And that material needs to be taken out of the water. They are hazards to navigation. Again, it's very expensive work. Again, we didn't have the funds to do it at a pace that it needed to be done. And it's something that we recognize that has to happen. I believe it falls in most of the guidelines, probably exactly within the guidelines of the coastal impact grant funding.
It's probably the kind of stuff that they like to see funded because it does involve taking care of our...
We get it cleaned up. We can keep it that way. Judge, they did reduce the amount and inform me that because a lot of what they saw in the pictures wasn't in the water. We couldn't get the water. We had torrential rains, and I would have gotten stuck over there. And most of it really is accessible only by water.
Well, you know, we're going to be getting funding on this every year, and let's see where it goes.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There are motion to... Judge, I have one question of Javier. Javier, I know that at all the meetings that we've had with the Bahia Grande Restoration Group, we've had this hydrology question come up. Where is Javier? Oh, okay, sorry. You're always sitting over here. And I was led to believe that we were going to have a request by one of the departments at the university to do a hydrology study on freshwater, you know, all of that whole system that needs to be looked at on a long-term basis. They did not submit any?
They did submit it, but it wasn't what we expected. What it was, it was an outreach project application. They wanted to build a pavilion out at Daltamay and have educational...
Yeah, I'm talking about hydrology.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't what she came to us at the beginning.
The focus wasn't the same.
Bahia Grande Restoration.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're on the other end, okay? The Bahia Grande Restoration. You're talking about the Aurora. At every meeting we've had, we've had questions around the hydrology of the system there. And I think it was Dr. Jupen Avidesh that attended the last meeting, if you recall, in which they talked about needing to do some hydrology studies on a large-scale basis. And I don't mean large in money. I just mean large in the whole area that would possibly help in figuring out what is needed out there because there's some concerns that were raised in regards to the salinity levels and things of that sort. You were there also, Judge?
Yes, Commissioner, and that is part of the overall application to the state.
Okay, with the Bahia Grande?
With the Bahia Grande.
It's included.
Yes, it's included. We're asking for $2.7 million and $500,000 from the county CIAP.
So it's part of the state?
But it's part of the overall...
I just want to make sure that that was included because that's a critical element of that whole plan that we're doing out there.
They're going to include two hydrology models, if I'm not mistaken, as part of the application.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. All right.
Judge, if we could ask also that the commissioners add, since there were 11 projects, the committee's intention[1703.36]
intention was to include the projects that didn't fall within the funding ranges, which was the Aurora, Colorado wetlands outreach for $124,000, the U T Pan American Coastal Studies Lab Observation Network at $139,000, and the wave tank for South Peter Island at $100,000 in the Tier Two applications, in case they, something happened tragically in the top part of one of the major projects, that these projects would still be eligible for funding.
But in that order of priority?
Yeah, in that order of priority.
Just Tier Two?
The Tier Two, yeah, to add them to the Tier Two.
Well, then, they would be after the City of Arlington and South Peter Island, or what?
Yes, yeah, they would fall after that.
I have no problem with that.
I made a motion.
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing it out by state, and I, I oppose. Motion. Okay, 14th, consideration approval of reappointment or replacement of Cameron County Insurance Committee members?
Judge, on this item, first of all, I've noticed this before, Manuela, that I had a problem with people getting paid for serving the committee when the meetings are held during the day, when they're already being paid as employees of this county. But if this is going to continue, and if this court decides to continue this, I feel that, you know, $3,000 is a heck of a lot for a lot of people.
Okay, yes.
And I think that it's only fair that that position be rotated.
Okay.
And not keep the same people that are getting paid.
All right. Who do you want to rotate them with? What names?
Well, I'd like to recommend Mela Hernandez, for one. She's extremely knowledgeable, she's been with the county a long time, and I think she would be very good in the committee.
Okay, who else?
I'd like to just take away the $3,000 stipend altogether, unless these meetings are occurring at other than county time. If the meetings are occurring during a workday, of which people are at work, I don't believe that we should be paying a stipend, and that's just my personal opinion, you know?
Well, I've given that opinion, Commissioner, several times, but I'm just saying that if we were to keep the $3,000, then I say that we rotate those people.
So you tell me what you want to do, and we'll initiate it.
I agree with Commissioner Garcia that we, I'd like to keep the people that are there. One of them is my, and to pay them the way it is, but not to do it during company time, you know?
Okay. I don't think that's what he was proposing. He's proposing to eliminate the.
No, I'm saying if they're meeting during the day, their regular county workday, I don't think we should be paying a stipend, and I don't know legally where that is, I guess we can do whatever.
And you said unless.
They meet at other than county time.
That's what I'm proposing.
Okay, so you're recommending someone to include him?
I recommend Mela Hernandez.
For which?
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, I don't want to hog this, that, you know, the other commissioners can nominate someone else. Or I can come up with three people that I think would be very good.
I'm not putting more names, but my recommendations won't get paid extra for going to a meeting, I guarantee. You know, I mean.
Can I make a motion? We, I make a motion that they not be paid and continue holding your meetings during company time.
Sir, a second to the.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing it out by state, and I.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. So you want to keep all the members of the committee?
Well, we're going to pay $3,000.
You want to add Mela to the committee, too? We can add her on, we can have another member.
That would be good. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, all right. So we have all the existing members plus Mela? All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay. 15th, consideration authorization for Lynn, Pham, and Ross L L P to continue the classification system for civil service project?
They have done everything except the classification system, and they're willing to complete the classification system if they just paid their fee. We're going to have to pay them sooner or later anyway.
Pay them what we owe them?
What we owe them. No additional fee. They'll do.
Except for what they say we owe them?
Yeah.
Okay, so, in other words, all you're asking us is for authority to pay them what they're owed, and we're assuming we're going to get what we paid for?
Yes.
Gosh, I hate that tone.
According to their letter, though, if I read this properly, it says.
Expenses.
We, well, more than that. It says, "We would expect to be paid for our travel expenses and time spent."
That's if they're asked to come down here, but I've already conferred with Mr. Villarreal, and we don't believe that would be necessary. That's our choice. We can review the system they provide us, and the Civil Service Commission now has their own staff attorney, he can review it. It won't be necessary for them to come down unless we ask them, and I don't anticipate that.
So how much money are we talking about?
We owe them right now $60,000. We paid them $12,000.
And their original estimate was for how much?
$25,000 to $30,000. We cut them off. We cut them off when we got the last bill, said, "Stop, tell them to get the commissioners' court," and you all said, "Tell them to cut it off." They came back and said, "Look, you know, because part of that bill is for work done on the classification system," which just hangs out there. We owe them for the work done, but we don't get a classification system, so they've said, "We'll go ahead and complete the classification system without any additional charge, other than if we have to come down here." And, you know, you can pass the motion the way you want. You can say you'll accept their offer, but direct that they do not come down.
What's your recommendation, sir?
I recommend that you get the system finished, we need it, and they've done the work. I recommend you approve. We contracted with them initially to do it, because they are probably the leading authority in the state to do it, so I, you know, I think that they should finish it, and they're not going to charge us any more, you know? So I recommend you do it.
Motion by Commissioner Ben Garcia, a second to the motion by Commissioner Tom Mayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing it out by state, and I.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
16th, consideration and possible action regarding the dancing building and courthouse preservation and protection policy?
Judge, Commissioners, I'm sorry that I don't have a redrafted set of policies, per se, for this item. However, I've attached in your backup a pamphlet that's produced by the Texas Historical Commission on Recommendations, and it provides some guidance to counties on, once the restoration project is complete. We'd like to ask if you could give direction to the department heads that are going to be utilizing the building to follow this pamphlet as the guidelines, which essentially protects historic architectural features of the building, the historic walls, you know, advising them not to be putting pictures and shelves on these historic walls. Also, you know, it talks about how plants should be used and what locations would be best, you know, limiting personal items for desks and knickknacks and things of that nature. But we didn't want to be so intrusive in the department, into the department's, you know, employees' desks, that we decided that rather than set us hard and fast policy to use this as a guidance, so the department heads can make their own judgment calls on what they feel is appropriate, but still protect the public spaces of the building from, you know, people putting, you know, Disney pictures in the hallways.
Or adhesive tape?
Or adhesive tape and.
Flowers or?
Coat machines, vending machines in the public spaces that would detract from the investment the county's made in the facility. Another issue that we would like to address is designating the courthouse square itself as a non-smoking area, so that there wouldn't be any cigarette butts and things of that nature in the square, the main square of the building. We will set an area designated, designate an area in the parking lot out of the way.
Cemetery?
Well, I think there's some area, there's some space there that isn't actually.
Work two ways, okay? Cemetery smoking.
Yeah, but hopefully when we design out the.
Drop the butts there.
Well, no, we'd be wanting to set up something that they would be, have ash cans for themselves. Ashtrays or ash cans?
The chair foot pads. I had thought of that already.
Yeah.
How far is this area that you're speaking about from the courthouse?
It's across the street.
Across the street. I'm not a smoker, but I did get some feedback from some smokers, employees here, and we have to keep in mind that there are citizens also, smokers are citizens, and they have their rights, and I believe that, you know, it's not going to do any harm, you know, to send them, if I send them way across the street, you can put a reserve area around there, you know? I remember Ms. Alice Wilson, that you always used to say that, you know? We are also smokers, and we are, we do have our rights, you know, and I'd like to voice that opinion, you know, on this, because, and also, yeah, you have to give the rights to.
Let me tell you something.
If you, if you do not have the allergies caused by smoke, you know, you haven't walked in their shoes, the allergies from smoke are tremendous.
I'm speaking about outside, I'm not talking about inside the building at all.
When I was in the Texas, well, let me talk about that. When I was on the Texas prison board, we passed a resolution to prohibit smoking anywhere within the prison compounds, which included the outside, anything within the fence, and a big percentage of the guards used to smoke. We were doing it not for the guards, but the inmates that were in prison, because they used to, you know, smoke up a storm in there, and the health consequences that we were all paying for were significant. And I tell you, there was some complaints at the very beginning, but people got used to the policy, and they started, they started not smoking while they were in their shift, and it probably.
You might have saved their lives.
Had enormous, enormously positive effect on their, on their health, so I think it's an appropriate thing to do.
I don't want to.
They're going to have a place to go smoke, they're just going to have to walk a little bit.
I know how dangerous smoking is, so I know that I'm, I'm speaking against.
They can use an umbrella.
With deaf ears, but the point that I'm trying to make is that we have very qualified people, very good people that are smokers, you know, and we, you know, all I'm saying is that instead of sending them across the world over there to smoke, we have an area for them there, you know, they have rights, too.
I think that the designated smoking area at this point will be closer than where they actually park, so I mean, I hopefully will be able to set up something that is convenient, that isn't intrusive, and doesn't interfere with the building and the experience that people have of the building. One of the criticisms that we take today is that right now people stand in front of the doorway of the courthouse.
Well, I'd like to continue in a fight that I'm not going to win. So let's go to something else. I wanted to ask you, on the, on the walls that are historical walls, I went to the meeting that you had yesterday, and the walls that are considered historical are the ones that go all the way to the top, right?
Yeah.
Those ones you can't touch or anything. The ones that were built just recently are the ones that don't go all the way to the wall, although they have glass.
Yes.
That goes up there, we can hope pictures and things like that.
Yes, you know, and there's certain guidance with, you know, the wanting to get consistent framing and things of that nature that the department heads can use their discretion on, but yeah, the demise walls that are, you know, half walls that have the glass above, those are, those are okay. That's, those are, those aren't the same nature as the other walls that we're talking about, the historic walls.
Who's going to monitor this, Ray?
Yeah, that's interesting.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think it's the department, I think it's the department heads, and then ultimately, if the commissioners' court sees something that they don't agree with, or that they have objection to, they would bring it to the department head's attention, and if, you know, they are non-responsive, then the court.
Just so that the department heads are very much aware of this topic.
You need to circulate this policy.
Yeah, we gave it to them, we had a meeting yesterday morning, and we also distributed it to let them look at it. We've been talking about some of these issues, and they're aware of it, just because of the historic nature of the building, that it's not like a normal building, it's, there are certain things that you should do and shouldn't do and be mindful of, but there's still time between now and then to, if there's something that they have a major objection to, they can bring back to the court. This is a policy, it's not a law. You guys have the flexibility to accommodate the needs of the county.
Okay, all right.
So chewing tobacco and stuff are okay in the courthouse?
Assuming you're not spitting on the floor.
It's okay.
It should be okay.
Okay.
As far as the rules.
According to the policy, you know?
Oh, no, no.
Are we allowed?
We've got to be consistent on this thing.
No, according to the policy, chewing tobacco is okay.
As long as they don't spit. I guess it's.
I just want to make sure that we cover all of.
Well, the.
What do you all want to do? I mean, it's our policy, not his. I think if we're going to exclude the smoking, you have to exclude chewing and stuff.
I've never seen anyone chewing tobacco in here, so.
Judge Murray does.
I'm not going to mention any names, I'm just going to say the policy.
Well, maybe we should table it and bring in recommendations at the next meeting.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Yeah, move the table and bring recommendations and put it on the.
And if you have any input from any of the department heads, they would be appropriate in the next week to bring them to our attention. There might be other things we've overlooked.
Ray, on the floors, as far as the floors are concerned, I know that I have in my office there wooden floors that are very delicate, and they're historical floors. Are we allowed to put, like, throw rugs and things like that, or?
The Historic Commission was asked us not to use the Oriental rugs for the offices, because in the running pictures, obviously, it's just the wood floor, but the interior designer specifically, well, got specs on the chairs that had for the wood floors, so the chairs have a little rubber around the wheels so that it doesn't damage the floor. That was one of those issues that the Historic Commission told us, they'd rather that we didn't.
Do we have to come real slow?
Well, the thing is, according to the policy here, rugs are allowed, as long as they're of appropriate size, design, and color, and they don't go wall to wall.
In the.
Each floor.
Yeah, in the private, in the private offices, I mean.
In your, then you're talking about your private office.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, motion to table by Commissioner Tom Mayo, second by Commissioner.
Judge, can we at least get action on the smoking policy, just because we will be moving into the building before the next commissioners' court meeting, and it's easier to be more lenient than.
Was it on, was it on there?
Well, it's part of the preservation and protection policy.
Oh, that, so that's the only portion would be.
They're taking specific action on it today.
Okay, so move.
Okay, well, so the motion is to approve that portion of the policy.
And table the rest.
Well, I don't want to vote on that until you give me where the designated area is going to be, and what kind of receptacles you will have there.
Okay.
Didn't you already, didn't he already designate?
It was a general idea or something, but I'd like to know where the designated area will be.
Now, what was, what was the justification for wanting action on that portion?
Well, just that the departments are starting to move in at the end of this week, and I didn't know if there was going to be time for a commissioners' court meeting, I think it's on Tuesday, it's just that.
What couple of days of smoking?
Well, once it starts, it's harder to get rid of than not. It's easier to be lenient as you progress than to try to be more restrictive.
Are there no smoking in the courthouse area?
Square.
Square.
The square.
Period. That's the motion?
That's a motion.
And a motion to table the rest.
I'll second that, you know.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing it out by state, and I.
Aye.
All opposed?
And that means that any workers in there now, they need to know there's smoking.
I mean, it's many years.
Yeah, we'll get the appropriate.
Not many years back, I mean, recently, I remember, it wasn't even five years ago you were smoking.
I was one, I was a hippie in the 60s.
Okay, any questions, concerns?
There was.
That carries.
How we did it?
Any questions, concerns, complaints on the consent items?
No.
And the travel items? We've already approved item number 24.
Yeah.
I have a question on 22, is, maybe, I don't know who would be the one that could answer it. Is Tom here?
Tom was here just a while, where's Tom?
He had to go catch a plane and go to Dallas.
Okay. What's your question?
The amendment?
Oh, there's Mike.
Do you have something on this? Yes, there's Mike.
29C.
Okay, but, hold on, he had a question on 22, and I'll get to you in just a second.
What's the, Javier, maybe you know that?
Oh, this one? I'm sorry, number 22?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, at this time, the emergency service district provides a stipend for, or actually provides funding for the, to assist us with our fire marshals, and the funding for the fire marshals, and also that we enforce the fire code, and this amendment is just taking the existing agreement and adding another year to it.
At the exact same rate?
Yes.
Okay, it stays the same? Okay, it stays the same?
It stays the same.
Twenty-nine, Mike?
Twenty-nine C, would there be a committee on that one?
For which part? For the selection of the, of where we're gonna do the structural inspections, just the.
Just for C, right?
Yeah, just for C would be, I guess, Pete Sepulveda, our, well, and our county engineer, Nestle, and you, Mike?
Peter, David, if.
Well, Peter, David, and Nestle, Mike, do we need anybody else on that?
Hello, Javier.
Huh?
Javier?
Javier?
Javier. That should be.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you wanna be on that committee, Remy?
Not really, but I'll do it to round up the five.
Okay, run it up, run it up to five and put Remy in there.
Okay, there you go.
All right, um, anything else? Any other questions?
Move to approve, move to approve twenty-four, except for twenty-four, it's already been approved, and adding that committee to twenty-nine C.
Okay, second, and that's approval of item seventeen through thirty, and item thirty-one, fellow items, any, any other?
I just have one question, you know, on all the, all the travel that's occurring to the island, the nights we're buying at the island, for people, that's all in accordance with our policy?
According to the district clerk.
Yes.
Yeah, but there's other people other than district clerk going that are.
I think they're the only ones that.
Are you sure?
The answer I got, the answer I got is that they're involved in.
They're hosting the event.
They're hosting the event, and that's the reason for it.
Okay, as long as you approve it, Javier, I don't have a problem.
Okay, improvement, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing it out by state and I.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.